Commissioner Goldman?
I am here.
Commissioner Lama?
President.
Commissioner Viscaro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, great. We can rise for the pledge. Okay, Claudia, why don't you lead us up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. And Catherine, you're doing the invocation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to start by highlighting something we all know very well, that we are blessed with an incredible community of residents and employees in this city. In the wake of Hurricane Dorian, the residents of our city donated food, water, cleaning supplies, toiletries, blankets, tents, and all kinds of supplies to aid our neighbors in the Bahamas. Our employees also volunteered to help staff the donation area and sort the goods that came in. We had employees from cultural and community services. A huge thank you to Sylvia Flores, my co-conspirator on this, and the police department, code enforcement, public works, IT, and HR. It was truly a team effort. On their own, the employees who volunteered took the initiative to wrap all of the donations in plastic before they were boxed up so they wouldn't get water damaged en route. A seemingly small detail, but one of the many examples of the care and compassion expressed by my colleagues. The impact of Hurricane Dorian will be felt in the Bahamas for years to come, and our donations are a small way of standing with the Bahamian people. I have to say, seeing the team effort of the residents of the city we serve every day and the genuine care and concern for my colleagues is something that makes me proud and thankful to work here. So with that, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, with the season of Thanksgiving right around the corner, we want to thank you for all of the gifts you have given this city. We thank you for our residents, our elected officials, for our employees. We thank you for a city that works hard to provide world-class services and amenities to the community and for a city that gives back to help others in times of need. I want to ask you for continued wisdom to govern among the different viewpoints and needs of our time. I ask that you give us a sense of unity, compassion, and a shared vision to meet the needs of the people who live, work, and play in this great city. And I especially ask for personal peace and joy in the lives of all here tonight. Again, I want to say thank you for all you've given us. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we've got two sets of commission meetings. I'm sorry?
Run the tape.
Ed? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna run the tape. I'm gonna run the tape after the minutes. Okay. Do we hear a motion to approve the minutes from September 19th?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
I'm sorry, as revised. They were some meetings that were...
They were cleaned up? Okay, as revised. Sorry about that. Do you want to reconfirm your motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have the minutes from October 2nd. Were they revised? Are there... Okay. Minutes from October 2nd?
So moved.
Do we hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now we will roll the tape for our order of business.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the Commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Okay, we've got a few changes to the agenda. I think we just spoke to 3 and 3B that the minutes have been revised. We approve those. We've got an add-on item 11A, motion to ratify unauthorized expenditures of funds for the Herald. We've got an add-on item, discussion item 12B, 5G in the city. And then we've got, I'm gonna move 10K up, and then we're gonna defer 7C. Do we hear a motion to make these changes?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Jerry, I'm gonna, this is your night. So we've got Jerry Kaufman here, who told me today that he just survived pancreatic cancer. So I want to hear it for Jerry. So Jerry is here tonight for the last item on the agenda. So given his recent good fortune, I'm gonna take a resolution out of order and we're gonna speak, and we're gonna look at 10K. We're gonna take 10K now. So Jerry? You're welcome. You're welcome. We're sorry we had to sit you through the LPA, but Mauricio, you want to read 10K?
10K is a resolution to accept the recommendation of the city's Public Arts Advisory Committee for approval of Art in Public Places Application Number AP 2019-03, submitted by Sancho Pay Beach Developers LLC for the placement of a Manolo Valdez sculpture on the property located at 16690 Collins Avenue.
Excellent. Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Jessie Cookercorn, and I represent the Public Arts Advisory Commission, just here to advise you. So I'm gonna read what we have met upon. On October 10th, the PAC met and considered the above referenced application for a permanent art installation by Manolo Valdez entitled "Blue Butterfly." After debate and application of the city's guidelines for public artwork, the PAC voted unanimously to recommend approval of said application for artwork to the City Commission with conditions that are contained in the resolution. And I have to say, this is going to be one of the most lovely, lovely things you can do as a commission and mayor to approve. So that is our recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for the PAC? I think it's a beautiful sculpt.
Can we see it?
Yep, it's right there. Well, if we can, can we lift it up on the...
So that everyone sees it?
Yeah, there we go. Everybody sees it. Yep.
Very nice.
Yeah, that's the purple, that's the purple butterfly in the front.
That kind of matches with our Barney, huh? With Barney. We've got a lot of purple.
Does that meet the requirements for Barney?
Sure.
So...
Ella, you know, your expertise is, your expertise is off the charts these days.
Because when I sold that statue by Rafael Barrios, that was your biggest requirement. And we had to overcome, and that's why the piece goes down.
Right. I understand. Yeah, they...
We have to have it here.
They have to come to the, they have to come to the building department and get it permitted and get it installed. Absolutely. Yeah. So, okay. Any comments? We go to that?
Yes. Jessie, if you can, could you just clarify what exactly was discussed as far as the maintenance of the piece, what have they committed to? And then, is it going to be accessible to the entire public?
Right. Okay. So as per that question and the maintenance of the piece, all of this is addressed in the application and has been addressed by the architect, who's sort of the expert on the project?
Is that it?
Yes. And then, right, there we go. And then to the other, the other, the discussion really was about the merit of this piece. You can see from the shape of it, this is something that really anyone can appreciate, that it clearly meets our cultural master plan, which is established by the mayor and the commissioners before the PAC existed. But you clearly see this is a piece that's interactive. So that's one of our, one of the requirements. And then the other, the other, this is a world-renowned artist. Okay, so this is a piece that is, that is gonna bring our city, you know, along with cities like Paris and London. We are talking about a world-renowned artist. And then there's another element we discussed briefly, which is that the artistic merit is just so obvious. It's not just the color, blue, being like a universal color that we relate to in our city, but the themes in art that it relates to. You see abstract art, which is the history of this Spanish artist. So this Spanish artist is gonna relate to what you know about abstract art, Pablo Picasso. And he's actually associated with a very famous movement in Spanish art. So it's, it's an honor for us to be receiving such a gift, and it does meet all of the requirements by law.
Great. I think it's beautiful. And I actually saw his piece in Taipei.
I'll just say that it does also meet the...
Yeah, it has to exceed, I think...
We don't pay for it.
Yeah, we don't pay for it. It's the developer. It's part of, it's the developer's art contribution, so, yeah. So, okay. Any other comments from the DIAS?
I think it's absolutely beautiful, and we've always been looking for beautiful public sculptures. So this is really great, and it's on the developer's side.
I saw his piece in Taipei, too. It was beautiful.
I'd like to enable his comments. Move to approve?
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Jerry, congratulations. You're the man. Okay. We are going to move to item 5A. Thank you, Jerry. You look great. All right, same here. Thank you. Thank you. Take care. Okay, we're gonna move to item 5A. We've got a proclamation regarding domestic violence awareness, and I'm gonna let Vice Mayor Svechnikov take care of that.
Thank you, Mayor. I recognize that October is a month for a lot of awareness, including breast cancer, so I want to acknowledge that as well. I'm gonna read something really quickly because I think it's important for people here and people that perhaps are watching this to have a better understanding of what domestic violence is. It's a pattern of controlling behaviors, violence or threats of violence that one person uses to establish power over an intimate partner. Domestic violence is not a disagreement, a marital spat, or an anger management problem. Domestic violence is abusive, disrespectful, and hurtful. Some examples are hurting physically, using your children against you, calling you names, harming your pets, acting with jealousy, isolating you, threatening to commit suicide or to kill you, control your money, withhold medical help, stalking, minimizing destructive behavior. There's estimates that between 22 and 25 women will, all women, will experience some sort of domestic violence. That's one out of every four. And this trauma goes on to impact families and obviously children. The website that I got this from, which I thought was very poignant because we had discussed this over a year ago with respect to our community because we have a very high population of former Soviet Union and Russian speakers, the website, this is the first time I've ever seen this, has an option to read the website in English, Spanish, Creole, and Russian, which I was very shocked to see. So this is a very big deal. I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas domestic violence impacts countless of people throughout the world without regard to age, sex, race, religion, or economic status, as victims suffer at the hands of a spouse or a partner, it affects their children, families, and entire communities. Whereas domestic violence continues at epidemic levels and there are many people who are in situations of domestic violence who need to be informed about the community resources that are available. And whereas the information that is available helps to recognize a victim of domestic violence and how to refer a victim to community resources. Whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach, which is to focus on domestic violence and abuse issues as a priority community need and to enlighten our residents about current problems and programs. And whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach joins with others across the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence and share the worthy goals of this month-long observance and likewise support the work of public and private entities that strive to provide the best coordinated response to domestic violence in communities across the state, sending a loud and clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Svechnikov. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 7A, our two favorite items.
7A is in accordance with the City Commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, adopting the city of Sunny Isles Beach Comprehensive Plan Text-Based Amendments related to this Town Center District, creating a Town Center South District and a Town Center North District, providing for density and intensity in the Town Center South, providing for survivability, providing for repealer, approving the transmittal of the amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity, and reviewing agencies in accordance with Section 163.3184 of the Florida statutes, providing for an effective date. And this is first reading.
Okay, given the staff presentation during the LPA, we're gonna forego a second presentation, but I do have some public speakers for the, for item 7A. Maggie, would you like to speak again?
I will spare you because I see now that it is totally not getting me anywhere.
That's not true.
To expect any of you to do what the law demands. You obviously do not care about the law as far as I'm concerned. So I will just go on record as saying that it is unlawful to send to this day a comprehensive plan where the land regulations do not agree. You need to do one first, and the second, and you can do it in the same day. The second thing that I will say is that I, our association experienced the same problem with transparency. We were given the letter. We were told in the letter that the documents were available. We didn't get the letter till Tuesday. On Wednesday, our property manager was told, was giving a draft of an amendment, and at the same time was told to come back on Friday, but that it will be on the website by the 5th. Many things were not on the website. For some reason, I didn't get the whole Calvin Giordano study. I will have the property manager go back to the office tomorrow, to the clerk's office, and maybe we can get the documents that we were entitled to 10 days ago. This is not right. What you're doing is not right. I have been respectful of each of you. I have asked for information. You have, the city manager and consultants and the attorneys have managed to meet with developers. They have managed to meet with people that were part of the problem at the beginning. Nobody has reached out to me. And yes, I met with Alex. I met with you. I met with you. I asked you for certain things. You never were able to provide it. It is not only to be given the opportunity to speak to you. It's for you to convince me I'm wrong. I don't want you to do things that are unlawful. I want to be in a city where lawlessness is not an option. So I'm sad for our city, and I hope that at some point it can be taken care of.
Thank you. Okay, Felix? Felix Kirchner? Felix, how do you pronounce your last name? Is it Kirchner?
Kirchner.
Kirchner.
Not Kirchner.
Kirchner, sorry. Sorry, I throw the R in there.
Sometimes I wish I was Kirchner. Sometimes I don't. My name is Felix Kirchner. I live at 25174th Street in Sunny Isles Beach. And really, this 7A and 7B is really a test of how are we doing so far, right? We've been in these battles now for quite a while. So this is sort of like a card, report card, of what we came up with. We have to really look at the, a little bit of the past, of the background of the situation. And that is, we have to commend Mr. Renan Katzen and his corporation for bringing this issue out. Yes, and if they're representatives of here, thank you very much. We wouldn't even be discussing this. They spent a lot of money and effort to bring it out. I'm sure they have their motives. Nobody's a saint here, but, you know, it's beneficial to our city, so thank you again. So we did two things. During one of the meetings, we said that we're not gonna carpet bomb and just approve the increase, and the people spoke up against it. And we said, which you liked, we're gonna have a surgical approach, where we were gonna take it, go high-tech, look at the problem area. Everyone agreed there is a sense of urgency. We need to get it now because, you know, you could have terrorists in the building or anything else. We need to do it as soon as possible. But there was a gentleman, really, who was appealing and saying, guys, you don't live here. You're talking about height. We need to resolve it. And I can, I have to give you credit. The commission and mayor and the city manager did those things very, very quickly as we wanted sense of urgency, and they did have a surgical approach. Anyway, we're narrowing down the problem. It's no longer the entire city being upzoned, right? But as I would say, the greatest president of our time said, "Deverrai, no preverrai," Ronald Reagan. He said, "Trust, but verify," to Mr. Gorbachev. And one of the things we want to make sure is we, even though we trust you on some things and on your actions, but by this meeting, and you all look good on camera and sound good and everything else, I want to get a commitment that this is not a gateway drug for developers to get high. To really, today it's this, a little, we give, then we give a little piece more, then we get a little piece more, then we give a little piece more, then maybe one increase here, one increase there. So I just want to make sure that everyone in this room commits to solving the issue at hand, which is those six buildings, and you're not gonna upzone anything else on the west side. Otherwise, we're gonna have to make cars illegal in the city of Sunny Isles. Thank you.
Thanks, Felix. Okay, thank you, Felix. Rumiana, I can never pronounce, I'm sorry. You pronounce her name for the record. Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Your name and address for the record.
And thank you.
Yeah, the mic, and then your name and, your name and address.
My name is Rumiana Guzdanova.
Thank you.
22186th Street. I want to tell something I was thinking to not speak tonight, just to observe. But I thank you. You start with these six buildings. I came, I want to hear about that because I can imagine these people who live in this building for so long. And you last meeting promised you gonna, and now that was the first things you start. Thank you. That was great. But I don't know what to tell about when I heard. I don't care about this building. That's, I can, here is everybody, I think, adult people, well-educated. But to have a disrespectful in the front of everybody we hear the attitude, even, even the way how she speaks to the mayor, this is disrespectful. I can, I don't understand how doesn't feel ashamed when she did. I am speechless to tell what you deserve. You don't deserve this place right there. I'm sorry.
Let's stay on the issue.
Stay on point. Please, stay on point.
I'll handle the meeting, Dana. Thank you.
Please handle her better this time than last time.
Listen, don't say nothing because you screaming.
Stay, stay on point. Stay on point, Ms. Stay on point.
You scream in the front of everybody. Don't tell me what to do.
Okay, look, Dana, Dana.
It's not appropriate.
I'll handle the meeting. Thank you. Okay?
The appropriate you do.
That's enough.
Okay.
Stay on point. Yes, say hello to Nikki.
Come on now. That's enough. Let's just stay on the item.
I don't have a power to fire you.
Let's just...
Stay on point.
If I have power to fire you, you will be not here.
You let her do this to me twice in...
No, I didn't let her do anything, okay? The bottom line is, I'm asking her also, Dana, but if either you're gonna run the meeting or I'm gonna run the meeting.
I'm not running it. I don't...
It's my meeting to run. Thank you. So Rumiana, please, let's just speak to the item, okay?
Okay. What about the lady? I don't know her issue. But I'm appreciate the six buildings. Take of care now. Everything is gonna be fine, I'm sure. Everybody's working, but some people forgot whose mistake is that? From previous mayor, and now he's coming along overview? You have to work hard, but let them prove the people. Really, 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 you gotta do that. Because I don't want to be in the shoes of these people who live right there. I cannot, I feel so bad for them. They don't know where they're living in illegal. But I cannot understand somebody who, somebody voted for Donna Goldman to say, "I don't care about this."
Okay, let's stay. Thank you.
It's enough. It's two months in a row. It's enough. Please come up.
Oh, come on, everybody. Norman. Norman, Norman.
She's taking liberty.
Oh, come on. For God's sakes, Maggie's been attacking me. Everybody's attacking everybody, okay? Just... Let's get it out in the open. Fill out a public speaker card, and you can speak.
No, let him speak.
No, I'm saying that none of us intentionally made a mistake. Of course, none of us did. Have I ever said you did? But we also had a, we also had a city manager and a city attorney that should have prevented this from happening. Because we rely on them. Of course. When we take it. So I'm sick and tired of everybody just hiding behind the fact that the problem is not the previous commission. The problem has been that we have relied on staff to keep us on the right track, and staff did not keep us on the right track. That's what I have to say. No, no one's arguing, Norman. Okay.
But nobody defended.
No, no one defended us either, Norman. Thank you. Okay. Okay, public hearings closed. I can't wait for us to get through this stuff. Any other comments on 7A? Alex?
You know what's been done is done. We need to focus on the solution. My personal view and the way I see it, and addressing you, Maggie, I do want to stick to the law, but I think first step should be, what we did, is to remedy the situation with the six buildings that are not compliant. Second step, obviously, will be the Town Center North area. Again, and I've stated this two or three times before, I am not looking to upzone anything. And I'm looking to be compliant with state law regarding the comprehensive plan matching our LDR. That's all I have to say.
Dana?
I'm gonna reiterate that this is unlawful in derogation of the requirements of Chapter 163. I find this intellectually dishonest. We have an obligation to adjust the land development regulations first and foremost. This is really, this is unacceptable, and this is a litigation breeder. You mark my words. This is coming down the pike.
Okay. Jennifer?
I want to hear the...
Microphone, Jennifer.
I want to hear the presentation before we, I comment on the comprehensive plan and...
Which presentation? He gave it during the LDRs.
What, he said he was gonna...
Okay, oh, you have more? Okay, good. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Okay. All right, let's go. Sorry about that.
No problem. I'll be brief. Again, that's Alex, I'm Alex David with Calvin Giordano.
Can you take it to microphone?
Sure. Better? Okay. I'd just like to say two things. First of all, I did review the Waltrip report. That was based on the July information they were given, so it's not what we have in this report.
But aren't you doing the same thing, a text amendment to the comprehensive plan? Aren't you doing the same thing you did in July?
I'd like to explain the Florida statute and the reason after, you know, I have about 33 or 34 years' experience, and this is why we did what we did. Stat, I'll read part of the Florida statute 1633194. If a local government allows an existing land development regulation which is inconsistent with the most recently adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof to remain in effect, the local government shall adopt a schedule for bringing the land development regulation into conformity with the provisions of the most recently adopted comprehensive plan or element or portion thereof. That's what we're trying to do with what we're doing today.
You're not doing a schedule. You're doing an amendment.
We're doing a plan of action, and I will explain that.
It's both.
Let him speak.
Please. So what we're doing is, okay, just one question. If we amend the land development regulations to be consistent with the comp plan, does that take care of the south, Town Center South area? The answer is no. We haven't fixed that portion. So what we would have to do is amend the land development regulations, then go back and amend the comp plan so we can take care of the South District area, then go back and amend again the land development regulations to make them consistent. So per the law, what we're proposing is to create a plan of action to take care of this. So the plan of action is, we've done, we've done two things so far. We've, you've approved the zoning in progress and a moratorium. Nothing's happening with respect to zoning. So that's the first thing. So we've kind of put the kibosh on that, so nothing is happening. So now what we're trying to do is amend the comprehensive plan to take care of the issue by bifurcating the Town Center into two districts.
But you don't have the densities and intensities.
So what we've done, as I stated, August 28th, we've done the zoning in progress, adopted this, on September 19th, the moratorium. So... uh, adopted this, on September 19th, the moratorium. So, under that statute, we're make, we're doing a, a, a plan of action. We spoke to the DEO staff, administrator for this area this morning. We had a conference call to verify that this could be a, a course of action. As a planner, she agreed with our course of action. That's why we did it. It doesn't make sense to, you know, amend the comprehensive plan twice and the LDRs twice, so what we're doing is coming up with this plan. And that will be a resolution in your package tonight. So, um, what we've done so far is, you know, we've looked at all the planning-related documents, historical documents of the city. I cannot correct, correct the path, so I have to look forward. That's what we're proposing tonight, to incorporate new FAR and the seventy-five dwelling units for the town center south, and create two changes to the, the future land use map. The one changes, again, to bifurcate the town center to north and south. The second changes are just cleanups. And what, there are four, basically cleanups to the map, and they're listed in your report on pages five and six. So, basically what we're doing is, the Gateway Park is a park, but the land, underlying land use is now mixed-use business. It's a park, so let's change that and re-designate it to park. We're doing that. The Gateway parking lot, uh, parking garage was designated park, so we're changing that to community facility. The, um, Wassad treatment site, or Wassad site was designated mixed-use business. We're changing that to community facilities. Um, and lastly, Bella Vista Park still had a designation of mixed-use business. We're changing that to recreation, um, on the land use map. So, right there, we're, we're decreasing the amount of acreage of mixed-use business by almost four acres. So that was just a cleanup, but we're doing it all at one, one shot. Um, and I discussed previously the language for the amendment, um, to the language, for town center language, and as, as, with respect to the analysis of the sites, we looked at the mixed-use business designated parcels. We didn't look at parks, we didn't look at the community facilities. So that's why we have that number, um, that Mr. Krishna referred to. It is lower than the total acreage because the other uses, as was stated, it's F dot retention pond and whatever else is in there, and the other buildings, or the other, um, the parks and the community facilities. So we stuck to the review for mixed-use business.
Got it. I think the important element that he has pointed out was, he's been in dialogue with the state, and the state has basically said the planner agreed with the course of action. And this is the whole point. Okay, so, and this is why we're not, we're not three-stepping it, as opposed to, and this is why we're able to go after the buildings first and foremost, and then create the community process for the rest of the area.
Right.
So to your point Ella, everything that's left over is basically community or public property in one form or fashion.
I see what you mean.
That's right. So, and, and he just clarified that.
And I have the whole list of the acreage reach of one of those sites, so that's why we're comfortable with the numbers.
Understood. Yeah. Okay. Um, thank you. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
I, I just want, I, I had a, a question. I just wanted, more for the benefit of, of just clarifying this point, because we keep going back to, you're supposed to amend the code first, uh, you know, it's supposed to conform to the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And my understanding is, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm happy to be corrected. My understanding is that normally that would be the course of action, but we have a non-compliant comprehensive plan, so you can't, you can't conform the zoning code to a non-compliant or, or something along those lines.
Right. I mean, we have a weird situation. We have developments that, you know, is, um, over the permitted FAR. We're trying to fix that. So, that's what we're doing. Did I answer your, I'm sorry?
I'm not, I'm not sure. Can you, can you be more specific?
Yeah. Well, answer, ask me the question again, then I'll, uh.
I, I just want, I just want to know, because my understanding is that normally that would be, uh, an appropriate form of action is to start with the code to conform to the comprehensive plan. But, that we have a, a non-compliant comprehensive plan, and so that would cause us to do those multiple steps that you referred to.
The statute makes the, LDR is kind of non-compliant with the, you know, the comp plan is the big picture up here.
Right.
The LDRs are the nitty-gritty. And the best, you know, case scenario, yeah, we just do what we were, you know, we could do under normal circumstances. It's, this is not a normal circumstance. Yes, you would amend your, your zoning code or zoning districts to match the comp plan. In talking to the state and doing what we do, we're doing and coming up with this plan of action, I think there is, according to the statute, we can do this. So that's our way out to get everything right in fewer steps. And that's the reason we're doing this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I accept to the mayor.
I would like to answer that my side is fine.
Okay Maggie.
I would like to know, since in this situation.
I'm sorry Maggie, can you come up?
Yeah, might as well. Come up to the mic Maggie.
We really do have a very, um, weird situation.
Unique.
The, the, the land regulation is the one that's non-compliant, but we have the added situation where in 2008, the city told the state that they were going to delete increased densities and intensities. Based on that, our land regulations became inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. But the staff, or whatever, forgot to amend the comprehensive plan, or to amend the, the land, the land, the code. Let's say they forgot. They went forth, and based on that mistake, they created these six, um, buildings. Right. They were building, uh, they were all built after the city misrepresented or represented correctly and then forgot to do it. So, at this point, it is my, my, if I had been you, I would have said, let's have a resolution where we make the land regulation correct, and then immediately after, let's amend the comprehensive plan. In this case, you will be sending to the state, the south taking care of those buildings, and on the north, you will have the densities and intensities that should be there.
Underline, correct.
Exactly. So why is that idea not a better idea than the one you're suggesting?
As I, I stated, um, I think what we're doing is consistent with the Florida statute, and it's the quicker and easier way. We're, instead of amending, as I said, having to go back and amend the LDRs, then go back for the comp.
But Maggie, Maggie, the real, Maggie, but, so.
I want to.
Okay.
Thank you for calling me out, but.
So what I'm saying to you is, if I right now put in a resolution, have them do a resolution, saying, we, we're gonna do a historical, we are going to become compliant, we haven't been compliant since 2004, and we promise in 2008 that we're gonna be compliant. Now you have the resolution that is taking care of. Now, you turn around and do the amendment to the comprehensive plan, take care of the aid, and then you have a northern district that is at the right intensity, intensity, and then we can have a conversation with the developers and with the citizens and everybody, and we're gonna upzone, we're gonna downzone, we're gonna nozone. But we are going to do it lawfully. And I do not agree with you that this is the right way.
I, I beg to disagree, you know, I will.
You're the expert. Okay, go ahead.
Right, but my, I would not be presenting this tonight if I didn't feel comfortable. Claudia knows, we've talked an awful lot about this, and I was, you know, trying to get this off of my chest, and that's why we had a, a, a conference call this morning with Kelly Corvien, who I know you know, or have emailed, whatever, you, you, quite a bit.
Did you also call Walter? Because I would do that. You can't just merely reveal the juicy.
That, they were an independent report. I saw the report. Professional opinion, there are things I agreed with, others I didn't, and.
Did you agree with those?
Right. This is.
Maggie, Maggie, the only, the really, the only, the only difference between what you're saying and our process is, we're not creating, we have a moratorium now. So, nothing can happen. So we're not exposed by not having this alignment you're looking for today.
Right.
Okay, so, but hear me out, just hear me out, please. Please Maggie, Maggie, I, I take, Maggie, Maggie, let, let me, just hear me out. So, what we decided to do was simply take care of the six buildings first, and then have a public process where we land. We could do what you're saying. We could say, align it now, and then talk about changing the zoning later.
More steps.
More steps. But we're not gonna do that. We're gonna, we're, 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 we're change, taking care of the six buildings. We have a moratorium, you know nothing's gonna get built, and then we're gonna have a public process where everybody's gonna collectively, I'm sure Desert's experts are gonna come back and argue that they want everything that we gave to the south side because, you know, that's what they feel their rights are, and others may come and make those arguments. But the fact is, we're gonna have a public process. So, it just, what you're, what you're, what you're suggesting is simply, we're okay, because we went to the state, and the state has basically agreed with our position. So, I appreciate you saying it's unlawful, we're breaking the law, I'm terrible, I understand what you're saying, but we don't agree.
Right.
And, and you know, Meg, we've sat on this many times now, and we've said, we gotta agree to disagree on some of this. But, the good news is, the moratorium said, boom, we're done. We're not, nothing's gonna happen.
The statute does the same thing. The minute that crush them those letters.
Yeah.
And you realize.
Yeah.
Those intensities and densities were wrong. The statute says that you have to go by those, so you didn't need a moratorium.
Okay.
It was there. But also, and more important to me, you're sending to the state northern district, what are the densities and.
It doesn't matter. The state says we have a process we're going through, and they're okay with it. This is the point. I understand what you're saying.
So they pre-approved this?
Yeah, they didn't pre-approve anything. They.
Anything.
They, they didn't pre-approve anything, but they are aware of the process, and they.
What intensities and densities are on the northern district, the daily.
They, we're not touching. We're not touching it Maggie.
So there's zero?
No, no, we're not touching.
I understand, so.
Okay. Okay Maggie, 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 Maggie.
That's not part of the actual ordinance.
I think we're all clear on what our positions are, okay?
We're gonna get to the same place.
Yeah, we're gonna get to the same place, we're just doing.
But nobody knows what the northern side.
That's correct. Nobody knows what the northern side is. But nobody's gonna build in the northern side in the meantime because there's a moratorium. Okay? So that's the point. But I think we're all, Ella, Ella, I'm like, I'm, I'm, I'm over this now. Okay? So let's just, let's just move along.
To clarify, I want to, like, kind of read the definition of zoning in progress and of a moratorium, so we all know that, like, nothing's happening. I think that may be.
We're clear, we're clear. We, we, we understand that. The moratorium was what it was. That's right. Yeah, we got it. Okay. Um, any other questions? Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. Um, I think we're, I think we've beaten this one to death. So.
Actually, wait.
So, Vice Mayor, okay.
Are we going to review the, the, the plan going forward, or is that after this?
That's 7B.
Okay, sorry.
We, we have a whole nother item on this. Lucky us. Okay, we're good for another couple hours.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, so for item 7A, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
No.
Vice Mayor Spetchen?
You sure?
Yes. I'm real sure.
Okay. Mayor Shoal, yes. Thank you. Okay, item, item 7A is adopted. We're taking the recommendation from the, um, from the, from the land use, um, um, yeah, from, from the, from the, from the LPA. Okay, now we go to item 7B. Mauricio?
An order for the City Commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending the city of Sunny Isles Beach comprehensive plan, future land use map amendments related to the town center district, creating a town center south district and a town center north district.
Yeah.
Providing for land use designation amendments for properties located in the town center south, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for a transmittal of the amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity and reviewing agencies in accordance with section 163.3184 of the Florida statutes, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. How about it?
Well, okay, I think I've said everything I needed to say about both subjects, so we'll just carry on my discussion from the last item, but just wanted to mention the process, uh, from now on. Um, if, if you all approve a transmittal tonight of both items, we will, we have ten days to transmit them to the state and all the other review agencies. Um, because it's considered larger scale, it's not a small-scale amendment to the map, it's larger scale because we're doing text amendments and, uh, map amendments, um, it's, it's a more thorough process. The state has thirty days from the receipt and other agencies to comment. So, um, so if, if today's the seventeenth, if we get, uh, if they get it on the twenty-seventh, they'll have thirty days, so around Thanksgiving or so, they'll have to comment or get back to us. And that's for all agencies. Um, so, at that point, that's when they're, you know, now we're just talking, but the rubber will hit the road when they get the material, and then, so they'll have to review it. So, um, I just wanted to mention that process.
Okay, thank you. Um, and that's consistent with what I think what we've been reporting. So, okay, okay, I've got a pub, public hearing. Come on Ella.
I'm just making this quick.
Ella.
It's to Maggie's, it's to Maggie's question.
Okay Ella.
I'll make it quick.
You're killing me.
I just want to make sure I understand.
You're killing me.
What Maggie said, in order, to do it first, to, to, to first bring it in, uh, compliance with the comp plan, and then to seek afterwards, um, um, to get the six buildings to fall into compliance, wouldn't that mean that if you did it the way Maggie was talking about it, that, let's say the storage building gets sold, it has, it can only go as tall as what the original comp plan was? It's not.
For the.
You can't build as high as all the, as the sixth building that we're try, that we're trying to fix.
For the, for the, for the time between approving what we're gonna try to approve tonight, if we, it would just be basically, it would be a timing differential. So it would be highly, well, first of all, they couldn't come in for, there's a moratorium anyway. So even if it got sold.
I'm not being clear.
If, if, even if it got sold, they couldn't come in. But, again, we're all saying the same thing.
Are we?
Okay, we're just doing it, it's a procedural difference with how we're coming at it. Everybody's gonna have input on what the north is gonna look like when we're finished with this. And this is what I've been saying all along. We put this, we put the, the, um, the moratorium in place, so nobody could build. And that was Dana's point earlier about the land, they said, you know, the, about, about the, um, you know, about any development authorities. Then, we said we're gonna focus on the six buildings, because I'm concerned personally about the six buildings.
I get that.
That's been my highest priority. That's what we're doing tonight. Now, all we're, all Maggie's, and I, I don't, you know, we're saying the same things, we're just, we're coming at it differently.
I just want to make sure. Okay, but maybe I'm misunderstanding. So the north side doesn't, does, now cannot build higher, a, a south town center, any property, south town center that might get, uh, built in the future, torn down, rebuilt in the future, can build to the height that we're modifying the south town center.
The north town has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight on the south. Nothing to do with it. That's, that, that's the answer to your question. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7B, Maggie, would you like to speak again?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that, uh, we.
Mic, microphone Maggie, I'm sorry. You can pull the microphone. Thank you.
What I wanted to say is, let's agree that you can do it two ways. You can do it lawfully, or you can do it unlawfully. You tonight have decided to do it unlawfully, and for the life of me, I do not understand it. I believe that it could have been done lawfully today. You could have been taking care of this lawfully, and I don't like that I don't, by, don't open your eyes, it's a resolution. You do a resolution, you amend the LDR, and then you go right into the comprehensive plan and do it at that time. You have decided to do unlawfully. Statues are clear, and the conclusion is clear. You have to have the intensities and the densi, intensities when you send it on the northern district. I haven't heard anyone here tell me, when you send this to the state, you are gonna have no density or intensity in the north? Or are you gonna have the illegal ones? Or are you gonna have the ones that you should have? Which is it? Which? Which density and intensity is the northern district? That is not gonna be used, I understand that. But which ones are you impuring to it? The ones that should be, or the ones that were unlawfully approved?
Alex, I, we're, the state understands what we're doing, that we're gonna come back and revisit the northern district after, after they approve.
So they're okay with no intensity or density on the north?
They're okay with the process. Okay? That's what they're okay with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, the process meaning doing the, the whole layup, not necessarily the, the validity or the substantive content of the amendments?
Yeah, they're not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, yeah, no, you know, I'm being clear. I'm just saying the process. being clear. I'm just saying the process of how we're proceeding.
You're saying you have a schedule, an outline of this meeting, that meeting, that meeting, not necessarily that they validate this text amendment?
Of course. They didn't validate anything. And I said they didn't validate anything, to be clear.
But, but, you kind of, you've kind of said, well, they approved it, they approved it.
No, I never said they approved it. I said that Alex had a conversation and that in that conversation, they understand what we're doing and they didn't raise objection to how we're proceeding with the process.
With the process.
That's exactly what I said. I never said they approved anything. So, be careful putting words in my mouth. Thank you.
Okay, but there's, there's, that's not, that's not fair. What, what it seems to me from this entire discussion this evening, from the city's behalf, is like, the ci, the state's in agreement, the state's in agreement, the state's in agreement.
With the process.
Okay.
And I said that, and I, again, I was crystal clear. Okay? You can interpret it any way you want.
I'm not interpreting it and I'm not-
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not.
You absolutely are.
No, I'm not.
Okay, public meeting still open. Felix, you're up next.
So, since we have an expert here, just a small question. This whole procedure that you're doing, will this open up a gateway potential for any other zone to be upzoned, including where Infinity project is? Does this have a risk of that or there's no risk?
We are not reviewing the north town center. That-
But, this procedure, this is open-
This has nothing to do with that, absolutely nothing.
So, the future commission, whether, who's going to be sitting there, they're not going to say several years from now, well, we got this approved. That's why we're being sued by Desert to approve the others.
No, well, Desert, anybody can always sue us for anything. But, basically, they, this has nothing to do with the northern district. Correct?
So, your vision, from what I understand, your vision for the northern part is not to have projects like Infinity or any upzoning. That's why you're doing the south separate. Is that correct?
We're, our vision for the northern part is to have a public process and get input from people. Let's be clear. I'm not, you know, and again, again, they're all going to snicker and say, because they've all been trying to put this Infinity thing on me. The bottom line is, any project in the north that comes will come on its own merits based on the zoning that the public helps us decide is appropriate. That's the bottom line.
Your vision here is not to intend, intention is, this whole process is just to defend the people?
It's just, just to, just to deal with the six buildings.
With the six building and it has no risk of carrying over to the north side?
Correct. Correct. When you say no risk, I mean, you know, anybody can come in and sue us for anything and say, you did it on the south side, we deserve it on the north side. I don't know.
But, I'm talking with the next mayor, for example, saying, listen-
But, the bottom line is, we got to deal with the six buildings. Okay? That's the bottom line is. So, I, we have to deal with the six buildings. So, whether, but I don't believe there's any halo effect to your point. No.
Okay.
That's, that's your point. Yes, thank you.
So, is that going to be in the wording, in the letter to the state, that, that, that the modification that they are, that this is one type of thing and would not carry over?
Yeah, but Ella, Ella, that's, that's, again, nobody says, the public could come back and say anything. But, my point is, is that we're dealing with that one district where you had the circle. That's it. That's what these, that's what this language affects. It doesn't affect the rest of the area. Okay? So, to be, to be crystal clear.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Any other comments on seven B? No other comments? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
No.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shoal?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading.
Okay. We will, so we've got, item seven C was deferred. We will go on to item seven D.
Seven D is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter 217 entitled Rental Property of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach to amend section 217 dash nine to modify the manner in which fees for registration shall be adopted, providing for revocation of registration, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Stan?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, the purpose of this ordinance is to set the fees for short-term rental registration for single-family homes by resolution. And it's also the intent to have these fees match the short-term rental fees set for multifamily dwelling units.
Because we still have the four times a year for the single-family homes? Is that our still, is that still, okay, understood. Any questions regarding the ordinance?
I'm happy.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shoal?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be November 21st.
Okay, item, items for-
Mayor, I'm sorry, before we move forward, I just want to make sure that we had a motion to defer. Was that included in four A when we did the order of business?
Seven, yeah, we did, but you know what?
Seven C, sorry, not seven.
Yeah, I passed a motion to defer when we did the order of business. Yeah, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, item nine A.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter 99 of the City of Sunny Hills Beach Court of Ordinances entitled Public Health and Safety, creating a new article three within chapter 99 of the code to be entitled Provision on Distribution and Sale of Plastic Beverage Straws, to prohibit the distribution of plastic beverage straws to reduce waste, providing for definitions, providing for prohibitions and exceptions, providing for public education, providing for enforcement and penalties, amending the schedule of civil penalties and miscellaneous fees in chapter 14 of the city code, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. This is second and final reading.
Okay, second reading. Any comments from the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Pursuant to Commissioner Goldman's request, we amended the definition of plastic beverage straw to include stirrers. And pursuant to the Vice Mayor's request, we deleted the provision relating to corn or other plant sources so that, to make it clearer. But, otherwise, it's, it's what you saw in first reading.
Excellent.
And, thank you very much. We want to move the needle on this subject, just ever so little. So-
We have a public speaker? Fabiola?
Hello, everybody. Fabiola Stiverson, 326 points, Yanna Drive. Thank you very much, Commissioner Goldman, for all these that you guys did with the straw. And for our future generation, we are really proud of it. But, maybe we can, and I congratulate you. I see your blue cups right now, everybody. That's amazing. And for the future, maybe we could consider also the recycling bins in the same path of trying to move the needle and also consider the plastic utensils, not only plastic straws. Because now in the beach, they, what I see the most is like little fork, plastic forks, knife, spoons, et cetera. Okay?
Thank you, Fabiola.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing is closed. Any other comments?
I have.
Second reading?
I have, yes. Thank you, Fabiola. I, I just want to let everyone know that the school no longer has plastic straws. So, the children must drink just regular, without a straw. And for anyone that stays to the end of the meeting, I have metal straws from FPL that they brought for you guys. On October 29th, I'm going to be in front of the school with the PTSA, with someone from FPL, giving out metal straws and educating, and educational material about solar energy. So, this is, Fabiola, it's, it's moving along. So, stay, stay for the straw.
Something about electricity and metal straw doesn't sit well with me. But, hey, I'm just saying, you know?
Solar, solar.
But, I understand the energy aspect of it. Okay, with that, I'll take a, I'll take a motion. Exactly, Michael. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, voice, um, voice vote.
No roll call, Mayor.
No roll, it's, it's, roll call. I'm sorry, roll call. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shoal?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Item nine B.
Nine B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter 193 entitled Noise of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach to modify section 193 dash four to require that landscaping debris be maintained on the property from which it originated, providing for violations, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date.
Stan?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is second reading for an ordinance requiring landscaping debris to be maintained on the property from which it was originated.
Right, so this is when they take the blowers and they blow all the stuff in the street and then the lawn guy leaves and then it blows back into your neighborhood or blows wherever it wants to blow. So, this is, you know, you know, this is meaningful because it just, it's so frustrating to watch sometimes. Okay, any other comments on nine B?
I just have a comment. I think in addition to that, this prevents the debris from clogging up, um-
Right, it goes down the storm drain.
Storm drain. So, yeah, this is important. Again, it's, it's got an environmental factor.
Agreed. Any other comments? Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Second? Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Mayor Shoal?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Okay, item nine C?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter 217 entitled Rental Property of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach to modify license requirement for display, to modify enforcement requirements, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Claudia, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my book. I'm not looking up. Sorry.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, basically this is requesting that the short-term rental applicants, they displayed their city license in their advertisements online.
Great. Okay, that's good. Because that basically is folks start the, especially with our enforcement people, as they look at it.
It will help us.
Yeah, it'll help us a lot. Yeah.
Big, big, big plus.
Big step. Yeah.
Big improvement to the program. Because now we have to move to enforcement.
Okay. Any other comments on nine C?
I have a question.
Yes.
Claudia, besides the ordinance, I understand you've been in discussions with some of these short-term rental companies and they have agreed.
We're, yes, we're working with them. Exactly.
Good. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shoal?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Okay, item nine D?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending section 265 dash 45 of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach to modify the clearance and allowable location for awnings and canopies as an accessory use, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date.
Okay.
Um, this ordinance is actually, it was requested by one of the business owners and to address one of the issues that we had between the Florida Building Code and our zoning regulations for canopies and awnings. So, this, it will fix that conflict that we had between the two.
This was the burger fi, this is the burger fi issue. Okay, I remember from the first reading. Okay. Any comments?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mauricio?
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikov?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shoal?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Great. Okay, we move on to resolutions. Item ten A.
A resolution authorizing the City of Sunny Hills Beach to enter into mutual aid and joint declaration agreements with the Village of Bell Harbor, the Town of Bay Harbor Islands, the Town of Golden Beach, the Village of Indian Creek, City of Miami Beach, the Village of Miami Shores, City of North Miami, City of North Miami Beach, the Town of Surfside, North Bay Village, and the City of Miami.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. This request is for the renewal of our mutual aid agreements and our joint declaration with our neighboring agencies. These agreements are reciprocal in nature and it allows us to, to provide and receive assistance from other law enforcement agencies during critical times.
It's, it's what we do.
It's what we do.
And we do it well.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, you need to call for a motion?
I can have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ten B is a resolution approving addendum number one to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Sunny Hills Beach and the American Flood Coalition for a flood adaptation assessment pilot project.
So, good evening again. We approved the MOU at the September meeting and this addendum is just requiring that the American Flood Coalition include us as an additional insured on their certificate of insurance and that they have to adhere to the Florida Public Records statute. So, that's all it is.
My question is, when do we get started?
Well, we have a, we had a kickoff meeting a couple weeks ago and they're already, they're already underway with getting the mapping and, and getting going. And then we have a workshop with staff in a, in the beginning of November.
Wonderful. So, when do we expect the final, the final, uh, roll out of this?
I would think sometime in December, but we don't have a definitive date yet.
Will we be having a public kind of meeting or something on the findings of that?
Yeah, I mean, well, that's definitely something we need to discuss and-
We should really, we should really roll it out and implement it, right? It's great. It's wonderful. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on ten B?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved, so moved.
So, I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Ten C?
Ten C is a resolution approving change order number six to the agreement number three with adversary foundation company for third phase of the construction of North Bay Road pedestrian emergency bridge.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is a very minor item, but it's part of a bigger project. $1,350 for a baseline report from our environmental agency for the mangrove mitigation at Town Center Park.
Understood. Any questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Ten D?
A resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with Perkins &amp; Will Architects, Inc. for architectural design services for the Government Center Annex at 18080 Collins Avenue to include coordination with the Department of Transportation and other regulatory agencies relating to the pedestrian overpass bridge.
So, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this sounds a little confusing. We're talking about the annex, but part of the architect contract agreement to design the annex was also to design the pedestrian overpass bridge going from the government center across to the east side of the road. When we entered into that agreement with them, there was something that was not included because we didn't know what it would be was the hourly rates that the architect would incur to coordinate with FDOT. Based on the design, there's extensive coordination. It's estimated to cost us an additional $50,000 for the architect and his subs to do that.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ten E?
Excuse me. Ten E is a resolution approving change order number one to the agreement with Nunez Construction, Inc. for the Gateway Park Center project.
Okay, Richard?
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and Staff. This change order is to make an adjustment to the grease waste system within a building. During construction, we realized that the present system we were planning to reuse does not meet code and does not meet the design requirement of the building, so we need to make an adjustment. And that's what this change order does, to keep us moving on track. There is a minor correction to the dollar amount. There was sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents that failed to total up in the contractor's estimate, so the correct change order total is seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And that brings the total contract amount to six million, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Got it.
Fifty-seven cents.
So this allows to keep on schedule, try to catch up at this point.
Thank you. Okay, we have a public speaker. Maggie?
In this case, I'm sorry, just a quick, I know we all want to go home, but I remember this agenda item coming up and I was surprised that it came up and a gentleman from another construction company said that they were charging a million dollars, but it was given to Nunez even though, and I know there was magistrate and I know you don't always have to have it to the lowest, but I'm surprised that it's been less than two months and they're back for seventy-three thousand dollars. You know, it seems like a lot of money. And a million dollars, if what the gentleman said was true, I think the next time I will repeat that and see if I can get something that there's not a million dollars difference.
Got it.
Just trying to take care of our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public records, public speaker's closed. Any, any questions?
I have a question about the timing. You said to get us back on, on time, so what is the estimate for the completion?
The estimated completion date was moved back about four weeks due to this item.
Okay.
But the contractor's working on other aspects of the building to try to make up the lost time.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, so if I get a motion, it's going to be for seventy-three, eight, sixty-nine, fifty.
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item ten F?
A resolution approving change order numbers twenty-four and twenty-five relating to the agreement with Roel Global Networks, L.P. for the Collins Avenue Utilities Undergrounding Project.
Good evening. Chris, did you have an opening statement or do you want me to take it?
Okay, thank you. This actually, this action tonight is a combination of two change orders, twenty-four and twenty-five. Twenty-four is a function that I wanted to report on. We've been doing the direct purchase procedure with the project throughout and the cumulation of this action tonight, we will have saved over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in sale tax savings by doing the effort of doing the direct purchase and reducing the contract amount with Roel. The, the second and unfortunately the larger portion of the change order relates to our old friend, the unforeseen conditions. To date, we have forty-nine of the streetlights completed. All but seven are lit and those should be up and running within the next two weeks. We are moving forward with the installation of foundations. We currently have encountered twenty-three locations where the designed foundations, which were a precast, a drilled hole and a pre-made base, will not work. In meetings that we've had with FDOT, they have, they recommended and we have designed a spread footing, which is a different way of avoiding the unforeseen utilities in the ground. We also have in accommodating the property owners, some relating to the east side of Collins and some to the west side of Collins, with the delay of the installation of the actual FPNL equipment. We are now completing all of that. We are down to one property that has equipment yet to be installed. So the net result is an increase to the project to where the completion date is now anticipated to be April of two thousand and twenty. I qualify that in that pending FPL's removal of overhead lines, we cannot finish all of the street lighting. I don't anticipate that happening until sometime later in the year two thousand and twenty, but we are moving forward with the installation of foundations and the conduit. It'll be a simple matter of finishing the light fixtures once the overhead lines are down.
You said forty-nine are done, how many are left?
Excuse me?
You said forty-nine are completed, how many are left?
A hundred and two.
Okay, yeah, that's a lot.
But foundations are moving forward. That will make, we can install five or six light fixtures a day once the foundations and the conduit and the wiring is in place.
Got it, okay.
If you remember, we made a decision early on to put in more than one crew to keep the process going.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, this has been the water torture, but you know, it's a painstaking process. So, but when it's done, we'll have, you know, no overhead lines and nice streetlights. Okay, any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Ten G?
A resolution approving the request submitted by A3 Development, LLC to place two temporary signs at the Estates at Aquilina Project located at one seventy-nine oh one Collins Avenue.
Good evening again. The Estates of Aquilina Project is requesting two temporary banners to be placed at their south tower, similarly to have done with the Armani and the Ritz Project. And this is approved for one year and then if they want to keep it for longer, they will have to come back to you for their request.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to move.
I have a question.
Do I hear a second?
How, how tall or how big will this be?
Approximately ten stories high that we will cover.
Goes on the building?
And it's going to be facing west and south, right?
One south and one west, correct.
And the one that's south is a giant car Lagerfeld?
Yes.
Okay, just, so no one's surprised when they see him?
No.
Okay.
I'll move, move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten, ten H?
A resolution adopting a plan of action to achieve conformity and consistency between the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations as it relates to the Town Center District.
Oh, go figure. It's a gift that keeps giving, so.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Alex David with Calvin Giordano. I had discussed this previously, so this is our plan of action to get where we need to be pursuant to photo statute one sixty-three, three, one, nine, four.
Okay.
And this will also be sent to the state.
Understood.
Part of the package.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice.
Any other comments regarding this issue?
No.
No, I think we're all, I think we're commented out. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Yes.
Note.
No, I'm a no.
Yeah, note Commissioner Goldman's opposed. Okay, so ten H is adopted. Ten I?
Ten I is a resolution ratifying and approving the expenditure of budgeted funds up to an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars with Lynn M. Denhyzer, LLC for legal consultation services.
Okay, so we had hired, we had hired Lynn when we started this whole process with the, with the issue with the, with the Town Center and, and so we've got, is this, is this, when's the billing from, Chris?
This is, this is, this is the overage in the fiscal year that just ended.
Okay.
We had made not to exceed authorization in May, prior to receiving a lawsuit and the majority of the work regarding the, this issue with the Town Center District.
Okay, that's the explanation. I've got, I've got a public speaker, Maggie, would you like to speak?
I made a mistake in putting purple. I'm not opposed to paying people for doing work for the city. I know that you need your advisors. I'm questioning the total amounts and we have a law firm, Mr. Deonis, the city attorney, but my biggest issue is I will request that whatever money is paid to Ms. Steinher, you make sure that whatever she advises you, that she does so in writing, so that if, if someone like me would like to know what advice you're receiving from the legal consultant, that we have access to her thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, Ella, we're on a roll tonight, Ella.
Just quickly, the thirty-two thousand, not to exceed a hundred and seventeen, I guess the city decided to not have a permanent in-house attorney. Is that correct? We decided to hire an outside consultant?
Right, well, first of all, our, even our, even our, our city attorney, we hire outside attorneys all the time. So they're, so we don't, in other words, our attorneys don't always do all the legal work. So we hire outside attorneys all the time. If we go back in time, you'll see every year we've hired two, three, four attorneys. Hans hired attorneys constantly, so.
Because it says which eliminate the city's in-house legal department and opted to contract a law firm to provide professional legal services on going for the city moving forward. The reason I would ask is, do you think it would be more cost efficient to have a full-time attorney available to us, working for us as an employee?
It's not a question of, we have, we have a very, look at that, we have a very, no, no, Ella, Ella, we have a very, we're saving a lot of money in the legal department today, I can promise you.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I'm just checking.
That's number one. Lynn has specific expertise, that's why she was hired, so because.
For the Town Center project.
So Lynn had specific expertise, she was hired for that reason. She was hired for a couple of different reasons. It was also during the city attorney transition time. And so, so she did, she worked on a couple of different projects, but, but that's, but she was hired for expertise.
Is this gentleman a one-man show?
No, he has a law firm behind him.
He has a law firm behind him?
Right.
And, and he couldn't handle this?
No, he wasn't hired back then.
He wasn't hired back then?
He wasn't hired yet.
Also, this is, this is going back.
That was like a gap, right. It was going back and then as the Town Center issues came up, Lynn had expertise in that area and she worked on some of those issues as well. So, but my point is, different lawyers have different expertise and so we have, that's it, that's all.
I get that, but I mean, we would hire a chief attorney who has a staff behind him that has different kinds of expertise to come to bring.
Correct.
So we're not always going out and bringing in an additional.
And we don't. And we're doing a lot less of that today, let me tell you, we're doing a lot less of that today than we were in the past, I can promise you that.
Oh, I'm glad to hear it, thank you.
So that's the good news. Okay. With that, do I hear any comments for ten I?
No.
Do I hear a motion approved?
So moved.
Motion by the vice mayor, or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ten J?
Ten J is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Elite Tent Company to extend the term of the agreement for one year and to increase the compensation.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, Elite Tent Company is who we use for our event-related equipment, tents, chairs, tables, vans, things of that nature. We had a three-year agreement that ends at the end of October, so this is to request to extend that an additional year to get us through October twenty twenty. And the seventy thousand is an estimate. We spend about fifty-five to sixty, depending if there's events added throughout the year, small, small things that come up like Arbor Day or different things like that.
Okay, any questions?
I just have a comment. The, at the car show, the tent that was put up at Heritage Park, I know that that was very appreciated by the residents because it would have been impossible to sit through that concert in the sun. So it's, it's great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Do I hear a motion for ten J?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're through other resolutions. We've got two other tack-on items and a couple of, a couple of public, and a couple of public, public items as well. So we're going to go to item eleven A.
Yes, Mayor. Item eleven A is me requesting that the commission authorizes the city manager to exceed his, not to exceed amount, his fifty thousand dollar threshold with the Miami Herald. This is to cover some additional costs related to advertising the Town Center and some other meetings.
Understood.
So it's an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Any questions regarding the, the budget amount for, the amount not to exceed?
No.
For Miami Herald?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we've got item twelve A, which is our discussion regarding five G.
So I've received several inquiries about the five G networks. Some, some residents are concerned about where they're going to be located, how many are going to be located in the city. Some have questioned, are there any health impacts to some of these five G boxes and so forth? So, given that there were a bunch of inquiries about that, I wanted the city manager, manager to address that and what the current status of same is with respect to the five G network. So, Chris?
Well, as we discussed, the state has preempted us on this, prevents us from doing anything about the installation of wireless antennas for five G. We certainly, we've, we've tried and are still trying to prevent them from deploying these on our public right-of-ways by putting up their own, their own poles. And even though I think we're even prohibited from doing that, I'm, I'm taking a pretty hard line on this and frankly, just not allowing them to do it now. We did have cooperation, a lot of cooperation. I got to give our Senator, Senator Pizzo credit. He, he bucked the, the wave in Tallahassee and, and I've mentioned this before in another setting when he, I think I, week, month after he was here, because I missed that meeting, I was sick, but he, he worked and voted against, against this item. And he, one of the, one of, one of the things that we were supporting, because again, we, you know, we don't control this, we asked for co-locating for any of this kind of thing, by the way, on the existing poles we're putting up. We're spending, as Paul just, you know, talked about, a very, very expensive project of the undergrounding, which includes these hundred and fifty or so new streetlights. And then I'm going to have a company like this come in, dig a hole, put in a concrete pole right next to where we've just spent twenty million dollars worth of, you know, work undergrounding. I cannot speak to the medical or safety aspects of it, we're not into that, but I know that's a concern for people. So anyway, we're continuing to lobby from, from whatever angle we can, which doesn't seem to have much, you know, won't make too much of a difference, but we're, we're going to keep trying. And we met just last week with Senator Pizzo and it looks like he's going to, you know, take it up again in Tallahassee.
So, and I've also, I've had, I had breakfast about three weeks ago with the CEO of American Tower, who's one of, they're the largest cell tower company in the world, so basically. And I expressed, you know, a lot of dismay with him, not that he's been here lobbying, you know, American Tower's not operating in this area, but he has a lot of expertise in this area. So he agreed to give me a couple of his experts and, and let, and they're going to come, and I'm going to make a meeting with him and, with them and Derek, and Derek, and they're going to come and help us with a kind of a game plan, which he felt, which he feels might be arguable, because, you know, he's up against municipalities all the time. So, so I'm, I'm also acutely aware of what you're, what you're bringing up. I don't think we have a lot of rights, though, unfortunately.
So just to, when you say co-locate, that means that, you go ahead, our poles, right, so that people understand what that is.
If we have to put it in, I want them to do it on our poles, so I don't have to put it in another concrete.
Or they put them together.
They're not, they co-locate as opposed to, you know, setting up their own poles, which is absolutely what we don't want to happen.
Right.
But we can't prevent it.
You can't prevent it and like, I'm just looking at ways to say, okay, you know, here's the company that really knows what's going on, how can we mitigate it? You know, so I'm kind of looking at the mitigation strategy. You know, Chris could agree, I mean, I like what Chris is doing, he'll lock up on them for as long as he can, but we're going to get taken a task eventually, there's no question. But I felt like, at least if we get the companies that are, you know, the, the largest provider with the deepest resources, give, giving us some advice, you know, and he agreed to do that, he's a good, you know.
I think that's great. Also, Chris, you mentioned that there's probably, because of the, the Super Bowl, that there's kind of a, an urgency, a sense of urgency that the telecom has to get these five G, so we're going to get some push on that.
Yeah, yeah, we will. There's temporary systems being scrambled to set up for places that are going to show the Super Bowl on big screen TVs and outdoor plazas and things like that, all up and down the coast here.
Okay.
Good.
There is a lot of question about that impact on your health, having those rays coming through you. It's, it's pretty questionable.
Yeah, yeah. It's the same, it's the same arguments over, you know, power lines and, you know, and I almost agree, Ella. You know, I completely agree with you. Unfortunately, the state's basically said, you can't stop them, you know. They, they got to the state a long time ago, you know, the state, and that's called preemption. This is when we talk about home rule, this is like a, a home rule issue that they stepped on us over, you know, so. But that's why I figured if we can get to the, at least if we get to the big providers, we might have a bit better way of managing it, you know. And, and so we'll try to take all that into consideration if we can, so.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I, I just want to add that although they have preempted us, it doesn't mean that we're going to stop fighting.
That's right.
Catherine, Catherine and I are going to DC next week and we're going to be meeting with Rubio and Scott with the Florida League of Cities, and this is an agenda item. So this is not just something that's, that is affecting us, it's affecting cities all across Florida and, and really the country. So, so really, this isn't.
We're all over the country.
Right, and, and just because they preempted us, doesn't mean that we can't.
Yeah, you're not going to, we're going to roll over. The other thing is, is, you know, we're doing this beautification project, we're putting up these beautiful streetlights and now we're going to have boxes, you know, slapped on all of them indiscriminately, to Dana's point, you know, and different providers are going to want different boxes. They're not going to, is there, can we, can we force a standard? Can we say the box has got, I don't know. You know, we got to, we got to figure all that out because otherwise they're going to come in and it's just like, you know, they're going to throw stuff up there. And it's kind of, you know, now, what we have, you know, with street poles, you see all the wires in the bottom rung? Those are different providers putting up different wires. You know, the wires, once we have wires, it's, you know, wire's a wire, but the point is, when they put these boxes in, you know, there may not be a standard and so we got to, we got to figure it out, it's the bottom line, but it's frustrating. You know, I, I just get aggravated when you can't, when they're taking away your right to force to force them to coordinate. You know, that's the, that's the killer. And that's really what, what Larissa's working on. Because, you know, when you can't coordinate it, you know, it, then it gets, then it gets kind of gnarly, you know, so.
5G networks are internally on, so if there's three different providers getting, putting their boxes up, you're getting three different-
You've got that now. If you look at the Newport, there's, there's 19 antennas on the Newport, and there's-
5G.
Yeah, no, I know. But my point is, is that there's different, yeah.
It's so strong.
Yeah, 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 so.
That's when they push all that data through the entire AR VR experiences, is that they get-
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. So, so we'll see. But, but in any case, you know, we, I think we recognize it, and I appreciate Commissioner Goldman for, you know, raising the issue. Any other comments on, on item 12A? Okay. I've got three public speakers for, Ella, you said holding CPM and other licenses? See, see, now I'm confused. See? You, you want to throw in, yeah, you got to, are they both?
Do you want me to give you my name?
As long as you're up there. Absolutely.
Ella Kalish. I live at 251 174th Street, Winston Towers. I'm here on behalf of the Sunny Isles condo owners unity coalition. It is a new group, and it's going to include all condo owners here in Sunny Isles. And what our mission is, is to unify and use that strength and that voice to elect city officials that support us in our defense or ability to act in, against the board HOA members, where we have a lot of, we have a lot of actors that happen to run for the board. We have bad actors that are property managers.
And while those property managers, my, my-
Mike, please. Thank you.
But there are two areas that you have to be licensed when you're a property manager. One is CAM, which is a Community Association Management License, and the other is called CPM, which is a Certified Property Manager. Now, together, these two, now, listen to this. They manage over $900 billion in real estate assets nationwide. And this city has a lot of problems. It's not just Winston Towers. It's all condo owners have issues with their boards, and it's an arduous process to go to Tallahassee. I've done it. I've recently filed a major report against a property manager. It took a month and a half to bring together all of the necessary documents that proved the, the case. Most people won't do it. And so there's a couple of things. When I came to the city about the problems I was having, I, I realized and learned that these community, these Certified Property Managers or CAM holders don't have to park their license at the City of Sunny Isles Beach, which gives us very little oversight to intervene on behalf of bad actors when complaints are brought against them by property owners. And so I'm moving to put on the agenda the requirement of anyone who's a property manager to also register their license with the City of Sunny Isles Beach. It's really important, and this unity coalition, which is only going to spiral up, is, this is going to be really important to us. Additionally to that, Board of Directors, there's Florida law that bars most persons convicted of a felony from serving on a condominium board. And although criminal background checks and financial background checks are really considered best practices when allowing someone to run for board, many times, it's a matter of taking someone's word for it. Becker and Polikoff, who actually were the attorneys that serviced our, our condo for, I think, seven years, until they were replaced by our property manager's husband, just let that sink in, actually stated that best practices suggest that this happens. So I think also talking about a requirement that board, people that want to run for the board, serve on the board of condominiums here in Sunny Isles must pass a required background check and, and hold those, those backgrounds with the City of Sunny Isles. But the most important thing really right now is holding the CAM and the CPM certification licenses. We, we have, just in my building alone, had people run or serve on the board that actually were complete, were very unethical, and made unethical decisions that cost us a great deal in terms of the way in which our building was managed. It cost us an excess $2 million in court for not making sure that people were certified. We have a property manager right now that was hired, didn't even have a property management license, had never worked with the building that was 402 units. How do we move against these kinds of bad actors? So I think part of it that will make us feel much better, and again, we're going to be, put it, coming together collectively to elect our commissioners and our mayor that are going to support at least these, these two items that I'd like to move to agenda. So that is to put the CAM and CPM licenses registered with the City of Sunny Isles, and to also require that Board of Directors on HOAs for condominiums have a background criminal check.
So before we, so Ed, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, actually, I've been speaking in Tallahassee.
Because when it's Tallahassee, sometimes we can step on their laws, sometimes we can't. It just depends, you know, yeah.
Well, you can, you can have them register their licenses with the city. Now-
I don't know that we can allow, that we can force the board, though, to have the background. I'm not sure for it will do that.
I'm willing to give a little bit on that.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll do whatever we can, but like, yeah.
But because once we get big enough, it's just going to happen.
Yeah.
Right? Because we're going to require it. The, the last thing on it is that the, we're the second richest city in South Florida. And I love it. But what we want to do is, in the condominium Act 718, it allows the cities, Tallahassee allows the cities to actually have a paid omnibus man here once a month. You know, we'll have to pay for it, but they can work in arbitrage in order to settle disputes between condo owners and the board or property managers. Those are the two areas. And I'm, I'd like to move that also to put it on the agenda. So it's important to us.
Good.
And really would appreciate it, because it's extremely tiring and, and, and that'll make us, that'll make us safer.
Thank you. Thank you, Ella.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Michael?
Patience is a virtue.
I only wish I was here to ask for money, because it's never a problem with you guys. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Attorney, City Manager, Assistant City Manager Mauricio. Thank you for allowing me to speak before the commission. I believe one of the most important things for a commissioner or anyone that is employed or involved in public office is complete transparency, integrity, and understanding of what their duties are to the public. And by the way, my wife was completely against my speaking here tonight. I also believe that my duty as a husband is to protect the integrity and honesty of my wife. For the record, my wife is Commissioner Dana Goldman. When I know of a false accusation pertaining to my wife and myself, and it's publicized and blasted all over social media by an unscrupulous, dishonest, abusive tyrant who has gained their position by lying, cheating, or any means they can to gain the upper hand, that's when I believe it's time for me to step up. Commissioner Dana Goldman and I, Michael Gates, live in Pointiana Island, here in Sunny Isles Beach. Our association has certain rules and regulations, and my wife and I have always tried to live by those rules and regulations. One of those rules is that no public advertising or campaign flyers of any sort can be distributed or left on any doorstep of any homes. But during the last commission election, Alex Lama, through his wife, had her come to Pointiana Island and distribute his election campaign literature on people's homes. Whether or not he was aware of the rules of Pointiana Island, I do not know. But as usual, the unscrupulous association president, Greg Capra, who has run against my wife, Commissioner Dana Goldman, and lost and was embarrassed in the election, accused my wife of allowing one of our guests to distribute Alex Lama's campaign literature. That in itself doesn't make any sense. Mr. Greg Capra and his so-called security team consisting of Stan or Stanislav Friedman, who by the way, has been a convicted felon, multiple felonies, and one of the security guards of Pointiana Island employed by Elite Guard, Romaine Jollison, another one of Greg Capra's security force, who has been brought in and interviewed by the Sunny Isles Beach Police and proven to be nothing but a liar and a dishonest person. This is public information. These are persons who are creating the lies about my wife, and I just ask yourself, does an honest person hang out with a dishonest person? My wife, Commissioner Dana Goldman, received a violation notice from Pointiana Island property manager, Alvaro Vila, who is another person who works for Greg Capra and is constantly writing lies about Dana Goldman. When you receive a violation notice from the association, you can ask for a hearing, and we did. My wife Dana Goldman approached Alec Lama, Alex Lama, and asked him if his wife, excuse me, approached, asked him if his wife would be so kind to come to the hearing with us. This would have ended the situation immediately. Mr. Lama knew how upset we were. We asked multiple times. By the way, Mr. and Mrs. Lama in no way would have had any problems because they had not broken any laws, and they do not live in Pointiana Island. There was no downside to Mr. Lama or Mrs. Lama coming to the hearing to clear up this out and out lie and unfair accusation once and for all. Many months have gone by now, and Commissioner Alex Lama, and now Commissioner Alex Lama was approached again, and was given an email company, copy of Greg Capra's social media lies and accusations about my wife, Dana Goldman. Again, he was asked to contact Mr. Capra and clear this up once and for all. Again, he refused and did not respond. So why I ask myself, is it, is it because Commissioner Alex Lama has underlying reasons for Commissioner Dana Goldman to be accused of being a liar? What could possibly be the reason why he would not want to clear up this, this up, especially when asked by a fellow commissioner, when there is absolutely no downside to him or his family? I believe Mr. Lama must have found out that I was planning on speaking tonight, and I received a phone message from him the other day out of the clear blue. So now I have no choice but to bring this to a public forum, to ask Commissioner Alex Lama why he would not want to clear this misjustice and accusation up when it would be so simple. As one commissioner, Alex, as one of the commissioners, Alex Lama's, as one of Alex Lama's constituents, I have a right to question him in a public, public forum. So now I put the question to him. Alex, why?
Yeah, Michael, Michael.
All right, Michael. First of all, this is a personal issue, okay?
It is a private matter.
I called you, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, and I called you at the request of your wife, okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Goldman, because, first of all, it's a personal issue. We'll take it offline. I called you so we could discuss it offline. I've discussed the issue with-
I've been waiting almost a year.
You haven't been waiting a year. I've been, I've talked to, I've talked to your wife about the issue several times.
Yeah.
And I stated why, the reason. And by the way, Mr. Capra has attacked me with false accusations as well. So there's no underlying reason. I've discussed with her the issues very clearly to her, and she understood, and she was okay with my explanation. I called you to grant you the same explanation. You did not call me back. If you like, Michael, if you like, we'll take it offline.
Wait a minute. It's, it's, it's okay, it's okay to give anybody else a forum.
No, I'm not, I'm giving them, I give other people a forum for public issues. This is a personal issue, Dana. Come on. It's a private issue. This is between the three of y'all.
I'm a constituent of Mr. Lama's.
It doesn't, we're all, everybody's a constituent of everything, okay, in the city. So, Michael.
I have never, never come up here and asked-
Michael, it doesn't matter whether you come up here or not. It matters whether it's, whether it's an issue that should come before the city, for God's sake.
Let's talk offline. I gave Dana, I explained to Dana, what?
How long have I been waiting?
Oh, come on, Michael. Enough already.
Your wife told me last week to give you a call, and I called you at, early this week.
You let that woman speak to me?
Ed, does he have any obligation to answer?
Michael, I'd gladly talk to you. I called you, and I received a call back. So it would have been nice for you to give me a call back instead of coming up here. Yes, I'm very serious, so.
I would have been nice for me to call you.
Mayor, Mayor, please.
All right, it's over. It's over. Come on, folks. Come on.
It's not, it's not ridiculous. He has a right to speak, okay? Just-
He spoke, but he doesn't have a right to cross-examine the commission. He had us-
I wasn't in favor of this.
I just asked a question.
I don't care. I understand, Michael, but it's not a debate, okay? My point is, is that I appreciate you coming and speaking. Yep, you said your piece, but, but you can cross-examine, you know, Alex offline. So, I understand. I understand. I understand. So, but I appreciate you coming and speaking.
Thank you.
Okay.
Michael, motion adjourned. I'll, I'll add something. He would have attacked, he would have attacked your wife regardless, because that's what he does. He's attacked me. Okay, so regardless of me being there, my wife being there, et cetera. What?
I'm making a motion.
Michael, we all get accused of being a liar. My God. I got, I got maligned in the press lately. Nobody stands up for me.
Mayor, this is not the place.
No one stands up for me. Your wife's not standing up for me. Nobody's, nobody, they made up all this BS in the, in the community newspaper.
Time out, time out.
Can we?
But yeah, but my point is, it's the nature of the beast, you know? Come on.
Let's take it offline, like gentlemen, and, and I'll discuss it with you. That's it.
Did I go to you six months or eight months ago?
I'm making a motion to adjourn. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn.